Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Reese, we take attendance, please.
President DeAlessandro.
Here.
Vice President Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Reese, here. Treasurer Hanser.
Present.
Trustee McDonough.
Here.
Trustee Summers.
Here.
Trustee Whitney.
Thank you. I do not have any... Oh, here he is. Let's just, for the record, here.
Trustee Whitney?
All right. Go ahead. We'll give you a couple minutes. Is that good? Okay. There aren't any changes to the agenda. Do you have any? No? Okay. And then we have a presentation for Oxford Early Learning Center. Anne Robb.
Is that close enough? I think so. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm Anne Robb, the Director of Early Childhood for the district. I've met everyone. Trustee Whitney, nice to meet you. So I just wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about what's the... What all happens at the Oxford Early Learning Center. So we have our building behind OES, but we truly are spread out all around the district. We have licensed childcare and preschool programs for the district. Seventeen classrooms in all, before and after school programs at every elementary. Tuition programs at Leonard and at OELC. Our tuition programs, we have infant, toddler, threes and fours together, and then full day pre-K for four-year-olds that are the older kids. We have GSRP program in all of... Four of the elementaries, OELC, Lakeville DA, and Clear Lake. And that is a free preschool program funded, and parents have to qualify for that. We are able to offer that program to 64 students. And then our extended day program, like I said, before and after school at all the elementaries. And that's care for kids DK through 5th grade. So in all, currently, we are providing a service for about 450 families throughout the district. We have 45 staff members who work tirelessly. Any random number of shifts between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Some shifts are very consistent, and others, it goes week by week. And I'm like, hey, can you help at this time tomorrow or that time next week? So have a great team at the... Within all of our programs. I wanted to focus on a few different areas. Our main focus this year has been connections and relationships. So we've established that mantra that you see in the corner. Our goal as a staff is we observe, educate, love, and connect. And everyone that we have an encounter with, a relationship with, everyone matters. So we've worked as we've rebuilt back up since COVID. During COVID, and then even last year for part of the year, parents weren't allowed in the building. And that was tough on my teachers because they weren't able to see those families every day and establish those relationships. So this year has been amazing. We have a great, you know, it's a great entrance way. You know, the parents are able to come in and see all of the teachers and talk with them. We've also focused on social-emotional as part of the recovery plan for the rest of the district. We are also doing that. We've adopted the Second Step curriculum, which is used in the elementaries. So we've used it in our older toddler program and our preschool. And the teachers take the most developmentally appropriate parts of that to use in their classrooms. Mainly, it's the helping the little ones understand their emotions and how to deal with those big emotions. We've also been a part of the District Wellness Committee. I have a teacher who is on that committee, and she's brought that back to OELC and established our own separate staff wellness committee. And they've created some things like a walking program and other things like that. Another great thing to help social-emotional that we've had this year is a partnership with Easter Seals. They approached Todd and Anita over the summer indicating that they had grants, grant money to help bring on another early childhood center. And with all the work that they did last year with us, they wanted to partner with us. So we have a clinician on staff two to three half-days per week. And she's trained in infant-toddler mental health. And she's a great, great support person to not only our students, but especially their families. Many families have reached out to speak with her, and then our staff also. So she's a great asset. Final area of focus, we are childcare, but we are academic. Whenever a family comes in to visit for a tour, it's explained to them like that. We are an educational facility that offers childcare. So all of our classrooms use a high-scope curriculum, which is a curriculum that's used throughout the county in most preschool classrooms. It provides a consistent daily routine, and it's centered around student interest and inquiry-based. To go along with that, our teachers are continuously assessing the children using CORE. And that provides guidance over 32 different developmental areas. Teachers are taking notes and scoring, ranking the kids in the areas, trying to always plan and prepare to scaffold them up to the next... Their next area of development. We've also incorporated many IB attributes. Every classroom creates essential agreements, even in the infant room. I didn't get a picture of it, but they have their essential agreements on the wall. Safe hands, safe feet. So they start their year by creating the essential agreements together with the students. And then we do have one classroom, our pre-K four-year-old tuition program is IB-focused. And our teacher there works with Courtney Moran, our IB coordinator, as well as the DK and K teachers, to help develop lessons. And mainly, they're focused around the learner profile at this beginning age. And this year, thanks to Pam and Anita and Christine Russell's support, we've been able to develop a MTSS team to support OELC. So essentially, what happens is we meet once a month, and teachers will bring children to the meeting that they are struggling with, either academically or behaviorally, and just need some extra help, guidance, strategies. So they'll talk about the child, what they're seeing, what they've tried. And then the team will help give additional support strategies, as well as data collection that needs to happen. And I'm really excited about this because it has been happening in the past, but this formalizes it more so that as these kids move forward into DK and K, that documentation is there. So they're not reinventing the wheel every time they go up. And they're not calling me and saying, what's happening with this child? What have you done? It's all documented, and they can see that. So if you notice in the pictures, we have several different activities going on. We are busy all day, every day. We have some explorers and writers. So as I found all these pictures, our goal and what we are really doing at OELC is helping to mold the future artists, chefs, builders, scientists, mathematicians, and authors of the world. Some points of pride, these are also focused... Everything we do is focused on relationship building. And these are not only within our program, but the district and the community as a whole. So we've had several family activities. We have an open house and curriculum night towards the beginning of the year. We've had a trunk-or-treat, which they come out and set up behind us by the athletic field there. That's always a lot of fun. We had a first-ever OELC Night at the Arts. This year, we partnered with the library, and it was an amazing event. Kind of the brainchild of Pat Brower, who works in our office. She's infant-toddler coordinator. She recruited some teachers, and they helped her. Every student had a piece of artwork represented. And most of the artwork was centered around a certain artist that they studied or a picture book that they then did an activity off of. We had over 150 families that signed in. Some avoided the line. But so we probably, in all, 400 to 500 people went through the library during that hour that we were there. The beauty of it is that the way we had it set up, it was in the big meeting rooms. They... It was one-way in. And when... Then as they exited, they were right in the children's section of the library, where the librarians were doing storytime. And we had several families sign up for library cards. It was really a win-win for everybody. I kept saying, I'm like, we need to partner with the library because they're right next door to us. So it was very successful. We've also had, during the month of March, to celebrate reading, we had many, many mystery readers come in. And our own Superintendent Markovich came in. And she... Here she is in a picture, reading to our favorite toddler, Two Friends. A classic book there. So as far as staff activities, we have many collaboration trainings. The staff is big. It's spread out all over the district and works long hours. So when I have collaborations, we get a day off here and there. But usually, they're 6:30 at night, 6:30 to 8:30 type of meetings. So I try to make them fun. We had a great collaboration over the holidays. Did a scavenger hunt outside to reinforce our goals and curriculum. But it was a lot of fun. We also honored a Teacher of the Year this year. Ms. Kelly Lee was chosen from OELC. And she is our pre-K... Pre-K teacher, tuition teacher. She's been with us over 15 years. Goes above and beyond every single day and is always willing to try new things, new activities to get the kids prepared for kindergarten. Several student activities, field trips. Right now, we're doing bus safety and kindergarten transition visits. We've partnered with transportation. They came over last week, and the four-year-olds get to go on the bus, and they love, love that. And then next week, they're going to get to visit kindergarten and DK classrooms and have lunch in the cafeteria. Huge point of pride is that there was an opportunity for me to apply for Child Care Stabilization Grants over the last year and a half. And we've been awarded approximately $1.5 million to put towards our programs. There really wasn't a whole lot of stipulations, other than we couldn't do anything structural. So no additions, no new buildings. So we, you know, worked. We were able to give tuition credits to families. We were able to forgive tuition balances that some families had due to hardships. I've done a lot of collaborating with the elementary principals to get them some things, some updated things, like gym mats and storage units, playground equipment. We've been able to upgrade the furniture in all of our OELC classrooms. So that's truly, truly been a blessing for us. Looking ahead, the school year is winding down, but we are gearing up for our summer camp program. So we take about a week off, and then we offer summer camp at OELC and OES from June 19th through August 11th, infants through 12 years of age. The older kids get to go on weekly field trips. They're involved in a lot of technology and some literacy learning, outdoor learning. So right now, we have approximately 200 students enrolled in that with 30 staff members. So we are busy. And then already in the fall, we've already hit our registration for fall. We have over 350 kids already enrolled. We have 26 families and counting on our waitlist for our infant-toddler. Unfortunately, we have one infant room and two toddler rooms, and we can only have so many students in each of those rooms because of licensing guidelines. We have a lot of disappointed families. And they're like, well, can't you just have another classroom? I wish I could, but I don't have any space. So that is the sad thing when families call, and they're such a dire need right now for infant-toddler care. And then a focus of mine for next year will also be offering more family events on specific areas like literacy in the home, different behavioral strategies, and things like that. As I was choosing pictures, there are way too many to choose from. So here are some of our favorite friends. Many of our audience members will recognize some kids here. So, you know, and with that being said, you know, I'm sure you are aware, but we do offer discounts to school employees, a 10% tuition discount. So we have many, many, many school employees. I don't have that data in front of me. I wish I did have that. But we have a lot of fun, and almost every age group is represented here. And lastly, I just want to thank you for letting me present to you. I've been in the position, this is finishing four years, and the first time I've had to present because it was canceled every year. So... But so I thank you, and our future heroes thank you also for supporting all of the programs and staff at OELC. So. You're welcome. Questions?
Thanks, Anne. Anybody have a question? Yes.
I was just... So how much room? I heard you mention a couple times, space. How much room do you know... Do you have over there? How much is it?
Well, so at OELC, we have eight classrooms.
Eight classrooms.
And every classroom is...
Full.
Pretty much full to capacity. Yep. Eight classrooms, we have two office areas, and we have a very small work area for our teachers. And then... But we also have rooms in every elementary. There's a preschool room and then the extended day. So if we had access to three or four more classrooms, we could probably fill them. The GSRP also, they're giving additional funding for programs that can, you know, start up new classrooms. So we've looked at some unique things that we could possibly do, but another classroom really isn't an option right now.
Right. You don't have the room.
Yep.
I just want to say that I love all the buildings in Oxford, but this is my favorite.
Aw, I won't tell anybody.
If you really need a lift, just go sit in the middle of the two-year-olds.
Yep.
They will make everything better. Everything, everything better. But it is... It is truly a rich program. It's research-based. Everywhere you look, teachers and kids are interacting around best practices. And even the 18-month-olds, you know, are getting that. Anne is amazing. I don't know how she coordinates. You know, Anita told me that I was going to see some amazing stuff when I went there. And you know Anita, I just, oh, okay. But I'll tell you, it was true.
Because she wanted you to see her son.
Mr. True.
But it was true. And how Anne is able to coordinate, consolidate, expand, and get all of her people from 6:30 to 8:30 at night? I'm sorry, it's not you, Anne. It's unfortunately bronchitis. Is amazing. And so if you have not been there to see this program, you have got to go because I've seen nothing like it in any state I've worked, in any district I've worked over the last 32 years. It truly is amazing. So I want to say that.
Thank you, Vicky. And there's open invitation to everybody.
Maybe we should sprinkle some of those little ones throughout the entire district. More space, more little ones.
More running around for me.
It's your calling, right?
It is. It absolutely is.
Mary.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'm glad you finally made it here in front of the board. I was excited about Night at the Arts. I hope we're going to do that again next year. I want to get that on my calendar. I'm really excited hearing you... This is obviously an Oxford school. You know, we're talking about the SEL. We're talking about IB and essential agreements with toddlers, right? I mean, this is not... This is not preschool like I went to. And I think it's fantastic because there's an application for all of these principles at every level. And I noticed you stuck in a little career readiness down there at the bottom, too.
That's right.
I saw that. So that's great. I mean, it's fantastic that you're... It's so helpful to have... To build these kids up for the next level, to, you know, everything that you're doing to make them comfortable for the next step and showing them next steps. And it's not just getting kicked from one building to the next.
Right.
You know, so I just... I love all the tools that you're offering. Thank you so much for presenting this, and I hope I can get there before the end of the year.
You're welcome. I hope so, too.
And you all don't take your summers off either, huh? The teachers around here just don't get summers off.
No, I do not. I'll sneak in a vacation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for the kind words.
Great program. As everybody has said, the program is great. And I think really what the important piece of it is, is that we're building a foundation. And we're giving a foundation for the youngest students that we have. And we're bringing it all together so that we just keep continuing to add on that foundation year after year. It's a great program, and it's great to hear that you're doing so well over there.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Okay, item four. Yeah, just keep them up there. Schedule public comments for agenda items. We had no submissions. So that leads us to number five, our consent agenda, which is the meeting minutes of April 25th, regular meeting and our closed-session meetings, and the bill's payable. Is there a motion, please?
You want me to read it?
Yes, Heather.
Okay. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Support, Mary? Any discussion? I do want to point out again, anytime I see that there's a higher number than normal and the bill's payable, I kind of... I go and ask Connie. And so you'll see that there's $5,686, or $5,686,058. And those are interest payments that we're making on our debt. We pay that... We have to pay it this month. It was an accelerated payment, and it will be taken out yearly so that we... So that we make our commitments to the bond that we took out years ago. But that was... We had principal and interest fees to our school... Our bond debt from 2010, 2015, 2016, and 2018. And that's all bonds and sinking funds and everything. So all those are wrapped into one. So it's not just one, it's the combination of all four of those. So if you have any further questions, Connie or the folks in finance could tell that better than I can, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that that's a combination of all those. All right. So there's the discussion. Any further discussion? Okay, all is in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Superintendent, report.
Yes, a couple of things. One is, as you know, the Guideposts report was released today, part one.
Last night.
I mean, last night, yes, at 7 o'clock. And we have received it. Some of us even have a hard copy of it, the size of an encyclopedia. We are going to be taking a very close look at it, of course. It's a dense report. It's full of information. It's got a lot to think about, many, many recommendations. The Cabinet began its review this morning, and we'll continue that for the next couple of weeks. Obviously, our safety, security people will be reviewing it very carefully. Some of the recommendations that are in that report are actually things that are already in progress or on our pending projects list. Some are new things for us to think about. But we're going to take a very diligent, a very studious approach and come back to you in a couple of weeks with our kind of what we surmise as a timeline for incorporating those things we need to incorporate. Maybe there are some things in the report that require community or staff kinds of surveying because they... There are some things recommended that truly would kind of change the face of how we're doing things, and you might want to have some additional input before we bring those kinds of decisions to you. So we're going to take a very studied approach. It's not going to be quick. As you saw the report, it's dense. There's a lot of important information in it, and it requires study time on our part. On Thursday, as you know, Guideposts will be here for three meetings during the day when they will be interacting with the community to see what questions they might have, what comments they might have. And Cabinet members, and I know Board members, will be scattering themselves throughout those meetings in order to hear from Guideposts as well as from the community. So that's my report on Guideposts.
Will on Thursday, there be someone collecting so we... If there's an FAQ that we can or ask Guideposts to produce an FAQ based on the questions that are being asked? So that way, there's maybe a footnote for it?
So we'll be doing two things. In order to make sure that people with varying topics and questions can get them all addressed, we'll be asking people to put their questions on cards that we'll be collecting, and then we'll be sorting them. Every meeting is an hour and a half long. And if there are 17 questions around 17 different topics, we want to make sure they all get asked. Sometimes you have five or six people asking the same thing, and those will hold until the end of each session so that we're not repetitive and that repetition doesn't take away from the topics being asked. In addition, Angela will be at every meeting, taking her notes and summations, and so that we can have some sense of what was asked or not. So between the question cards, between Angela, between myself writing on each question, we will be able to put together a summation or a...
FAQ.
FAQ, frequently-asked questions, list that we'll be able to produce.
Okay.
Second, I'd like to talk about graduation. We've had a number of people bring to our attention that our seniors this year would like and really deserve some special recognition for the fact that they've achieved their diploma under challenges we would hope no child ever has to overcome. And we've thought long and hard about this. I appreciate all of the input we've been able to get from students and staff and parents. It was a very important question for two reasons. One is, this year's graduates, last year's graduates, and the next two years really do deserve some extra special attention because attaining their diploma has taken great perseverance on their part. Also, it's taken a lot of thought because you have a tradition here in Oxford. And your tradition is that your graduation ceremony has been focused solely on students and their accomplishments. You've not had other agendas or other topics really come into that ceremony. That's what that ceremony has been dedicated to. And so trying to do both, maintain the tradition. I was not comfortable setting precedent with approving anything that might open the door to bringing those other agendas to the graduation ceremony and therefore kind of eroding the tradition that you had because precedent has legal implications, as we all know. But also wanted to honor the kids and protect the tradition. So working with the high school staff, we came up with what we're calling the Wildcat Honor Court. It is navy blue and gold. It is designated and purposed to recognize the graduates of 22, 23, 24, and 25, and to recognize them for accomplishing their graduation, as I said, under these challenges that they've had to face. So we put that notice out today. The cords are arriving in a couple of days. We'll be passing them out at graduation rehearsal. And it may satisfy people, or there may still be people who wish we had gone the other direction. But I've... We've made this decision trying to honor the students and protect your tradition in the best way that we can. So that's what's moved forward. And then finally, I apologize to you because Amanda asked very good questions about your next agenda item, which is the Oakland Schools' budget. And I was in a Cabinet meeting this morning, so when I got these at 9:30, I didn't get them to you until about 12:30. And I just want to point out to you that in case you didn't get to click on, we've got them in front of you tonight. It's the red and black. And I don't need to talk about them. I'm just pointing it out. That's for your next agenda item. And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you. Item seven, Board of Education Matters. We have a... Just as Dr. Markovich just spoke about, the Oxford or the Oakland Schools' proposed general fund... proposed general fund budget. Uh, there is a, uh, recommendation for action, so I think what we'll do is we'll put that recommendation out there and then the discussion portion of it, we can talk about any of these things that are in front of us that, that, that were questions from our, uh, our board members. Um, so would somebody like to make that motion? Uh, Mary?
Move to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Oakland Schools budget resolution as presented.
Is there support? Support Dr. Reese? Discussion? Yep, go ahead. Mike?
Oh, I was, I was reviewing the answers to the questions earlier today and, um, I guess one of the things Amanda had asked and I had noticed as well was the appearance of them spending an additional fifteen million above the expected revenue. But it sounds like this was specifically for the general fund and there was some other, maybe a designated fund or something that they were taking that out of that was not putting them further in debt? Is that, was that how I read that correctly? It'd be question two on the questions.
I, I think that's more in, those on the finance committee might want to
Cause it wasn't, I mean, obviously it wasn't real
They might want to, um, check my sources on this, but it looks like it's, a lot of that money's allocated to capital improvements, um, whether it be, um, their buildings, building repairs, um, but I, I did notice that number was significantly higher.
What fund is that money coming from, I guess, is the question, because they're proposing to spend fifteen million dollars more than what they expect to bring in.
So, capital typically is an account in which you contribute money to over many years, similar to how we do it, I believe, here at Oxford. So it's not based on the revenue that's coming in this fiscal year, it could be a collection of accounts that have occurred over multiple years. So when I reviewed the budget, some of these things, I wondered where these questions were coming from and now I understand, you guys are looking at the capital outlay budget. We're here to vote on the general fund budget, actually.
Correct.
That's what is the responsibility of our board. But it's good to know because one thing I do know about Oakland Schools, being an Oakland County resident for a really long time, myself graduating from Oakland County Schools and having kids, is that the O-Tech campuses are run through this particular ISD. Not every ISD in the district, or in the state has O-Tech. Well, that's what I referred to when I was in high school, I don't know the technical name of it, but when I was in high school, it was O-Tech. Um, that's where we went if, you know, you want to do any technical development and their programs have since expanded since the twenty-some years I've graduated. But essentially, they have to do enhancements to those buildings and the funds through Oakland Schools and part of that budget do pay for the O-Tech campuses. And I don't know what percentage of students we particularly send, but I do think we send a fair amount of students out to, uh, the technical campuses that want to do some of those certification programs. I know it was pretty popular when we were in high school.
And for us old, old timers, I just leaned over and, and told Heather, it was NeoVac, Oakland, something or other like that. Nobody over there knows what the heck I'm talking about because they weren't even probably born when we were in school. Uh, it's just, kind of dating us here, Heather.
So, I know, I don't say that.
I know. Um, but one of the things too that we, and correct me if I have, if I miss, uh, if I speak incorrectly about this, but there was a time when if we sent a student to OSEC and they were there for
Not OSEC, O-Tech.
O-Tech, I'm sorry. O-Tech, if we sent them to O-Tech, there was a, if they went there for four of the seven hours of the day, they would get four sevenths of our FTE or a portion of our FTE in order to fund that. That no longer exists. So they do all that learning, educating and all that independently of, we no longer contribute, they don't take our FTE for that. So I think that's why you're seeing a spike in that fifteen million dollars coming out of their capital fund to pay for those because there is an influx in those programs, whether it be, um, anyone that they offer or they could be expanding on. I, I didn't read it deep enough to see if they were expanding.
Yeah, when I read through the documents too, they did talk about some security and safety updates, which I think, you know, being in the district, we're into, we can appreciate the vast cost of those and they are probably extremely needed. Um, those buildings at least, I don't know if they're still the same buildings as when I last visited them, but they were, they're not brand new.
Plus, there's a big chunk of money, five point eight million dollars for parking lots and those parking lots, if you recall, the one here was over a million dollars.
Yeah.
So, you, you start adding their buildings and that five point eight million dollars gets eaten up very, very quickly. Uh, great question and it's very similar and I love the way that you explain it because we have the same capital fund that we, if we have a little bit of money left, we transfer it from the general fund to the capital fund so that we don't have to go out and say, oh boy, now we really have to, we, we got caught by surprise for something and we need to, we need to refresh it. We have some money that we've been saving over the past, I want to say, eight, nine years?
Yeah.
That we've been, if it's a hundred thousand, two hundred, five hundred, whatever that number is, we put it over in our, our capital fund in case we need it, uh, it's just a buffer.
And one of the things I'll just put out as an example is we're hoping to tap into that capital fund, certainly not all of it, but a part of it as we bring programs onto the Drainer Road property. And so, yeah, that will expand a certain budget item in your budget, but it will be money that you have in the bank, even though it's not money that comes out of the revenue coming into your district. Um, I, I also, I mean, obviously, you all know, I used to be the ISD superintendent, so I'm very familiar with how their campuses run and everything else and, and that's true. And coming from two other states, when I arrived here and I was told that we educated your children for up to half a day, but you kept all the student membership and, um, the ISD kind of did it out of their own funds. I thought it was great, but I have to tell you, that is extremely unusual. So.
And by student membership, you mean the FTE.
The FTE, you keep, so you, you keep a student, you program for that student three or four periods a day, you send them to Oakland Schools, Oakland Schools programs for that student the other three or four periods a day, but you keep all the state aid membership for that student, so.
And the, the technical campuses now do not have a fun acronym, it's just OSTC, they're Oakland Schools Technical Campuses.
Yeah.
It doesn't make for a fun acronym, so.
James and I just restarted it.
Yeah, we're revitalizing.
Okay. We'll be sure to
I was like, it's always Pineon, always O-Tech.
Yeah.
Okay, any other, any, yes?
So, if they're not getting our student memberships out and the help page gave me a little bit more for people that have been here longer, where does this money come from then? And, and
Some of it, some of it comes from, you have a CTE millage
Okay.
That was passed and so that millage for the county does support, uh, a great deal of that. They do a lot of grant funding, they, they get some funding, uh, CTE funding just like we do for CTE programs that come from the state. Um, however, in order to do capital projects, they have to do what we do. You have to save, 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 save over time until you can get that building project financed by money that you've accumulated. Um, they're not, for the projects they're telling you they're going to do here, they've not gone out to their voters and asked for a new bond issue or anything like that. They're trying to make it from the money that they're bringing in and the money, and or the money they're setting aside.
And then, is this budget, I guess for the voting on our side, is it more just a formality they're making us aware and then if we, if we, or, like, I've talked to other board members of other districts
Mary was, Mary was your representative to the budget hearing. Now, I could answer that because I used to run those budget hearings, but Mary, why don't you?
Does it take a super majority or, or does it not?
Actually, there's not a requirement for the districts to vote on this.
Okay.
You know, that, what, um, they bring us, everything that they bring us in their effort to be transparent with all of the taxpayers because we're all, you know, as, um, property owners, you know, we're all paying, we're all paying into this. And they also want to be able to show all the things that they are doing, um, because they provide a lot of services, um, a lot of services that you wouldn't think about, um, from, uh, high speed internet, um, and, you know, and cybersecurity supports to some of the supports we've been using here in our district training and things like that. Um, but there's no, there's no requirement for us to do this, it is just a formality. They want to be sure though that, um, every district has the opportunity to ask the questions, you know, to see what they are spending all of their money on.
Okay.
That's a very good point. With the cybersecurity, I think there was a, there was a opportunity for us to buy our own, um, cybersecurity technology into the district and it was over five hundred thousand dollars, but we leaned into Oakland Schools and they provide that as an overlay, uh, for all the districts in the county, should you choose to use that. Some going above and beyond, some don't use it, they go with a, you know, less of a security aspect.
Do we use that and then add on top? I know we have a really special person.
Oh, we have SaaS.
I don't, I didn't want to point him out.
Probably tell us.
I don't know if SaaS was, has been listening.
Hey, Sash?
Yes, sir.
Hey. Do we, do we use Oakland Schools cybersecurity stuff or we?
No, we use our own
Okay.
We use, um, uh, subpar
I just
We like the honesty, Sash, we love the honesty.
Well, that's, I, I was just curious, I, I had a feeling I knew the answer, but it was one of those, kind of set it up and let them knock it out of the park. So what, I guess, any other student services and stuff that, that they provide, I guess, how much, we, we talked about O-Tech, I'm going to keep referring to it as that, uh, what other stuff do we utilize from them out of their personnel? I'm just curious, like
Well, you've got people in the audience who use them all the time. I, as I said, I, I hesitate to speak because I just know more than I should know, right?
Okay.
Cause I, I used to be them. But Anita, Steve, Todd, um, who else?
Allison Ryan.
Allison Ryan, can you get up to the microphone and just list for the board some of the things we use from Oakland Schools?
Highlights, I don't need, just
So, from an instructional standpoint, and I think I'm loud enough, from an instructional standpoint, they have
People can't hear you online, we need to
Can you hear, can you hear her? No, can't hear her.
There we go. So from an instructional standpoint, they have consultants in pretty much every area, math, reading, writing, early childhood, there's a whole GSRP, early childhood, um, group that you saw Ann, um, present today that she belongs to, they meet monthly with them. They, they also serve as like the financial hub for a lot of our programs, so like, the GSRP funding comes through them, they organize all that work for us. Um, just actually last week, I reached out to a math consultant who actually happens to be an Oxford parent, um, to ask her about some math professional learning that they can provide for our elementary teachers in August and in October. Um, they have been tremendous in our recovery efforts, to be honest. Um, they have played a big role in the trauma-informed, um, instructional practices and, and building that in. Anytime we've needed support, um, as an example, when we had the student pass away recently when the MSU shooting happened and we knew that that would impact our, um, schools, we reached out to them and they sent their mental health supports, um, to us and they were working with us. They have very close relationships actually with our Oxford, um, school staff and I can let that man.
Yeah, there's a lot to list. Uh, from a technical program standpoint, I think we pride ourselves in our CTE programs, we have ten of them and they're very robust, uh, and rich and put them up against any other district. Um, but Oakland Schools provides us with their technical campus of culinary, cosmetology, some advanced auto classes that are very specialized. And so, when our students progress through those programs, they provide additional courses for them to leave and go off campus and take, um, of which most comprehensive high schools still can't quite accommodate within their buildings. Um, and from a curriculum standpoint, they assist with us in our curriculum review cycle process, whether it be a core, uh, course like math or science or ELA, all the way to world language, for example, this year, assisting us with what are the best practices, what are some resources, helping us connect with outside folks as well to collaborate with, uh, abundance of, of wealth in the curriculum world as well.
So, in addition, they have really been supportive with, uh, some of our grant funding, uh, for some of our mental health services. So they oversee some of those grants, uh, they support those grants with us. So, uh, some of the mental health positions that we added, including two FSL positions, uh, are funded through, um, thirty-one N funds, which they manage from the state level, uh, which is for general ed supports, uh, in our schools. Uh, with that, we're also trying to create sustainability, as with any grant, you try to, to try to create sustainability for when that grant is no longer there. So we're creating, um, the opportunity to do general ed Medicaid billing for our kids that qualify, uh, for those mental health services, uh, in our schools. So their services, we're already providing with licensed professionals as intervention services and, um, ultimately we'll be able to bill for some of those services where the kids qualify and, uh, sustain some of those programs once those grants are gone. Um, in addition to that, uh, they provided a lot of our crisis response training. So they have trainer of trainers, uh, at Oakland Schools that have come in and done our prepare training, uh, with our teams, um, starting before I was here and continuing on, uh, up until current. And, um, in addition to that, uh, with our, uh, our Remembrance Day, with our, um, one year anniversary, they were very supportive with bringing staff in, facilitating that, with supporting our staff, being available, uh, in the planning for November thirtieth leading up to. And what we found is probably the response the week after November thirtieth, we found the greatest need and they were there to support us through that time as well, um, which is really important. Uh, they've also, uh, partnered with our, our teams at the high school level around restorative practices, um, providing training around restorative practices as well as, um, helping support development of our social emotional learning curriculum with our, our curriculum committee at the high school that's working on that, so.
I'll just speak from the HR perspective, they also, um, run for the county the consortium for all of our job postings, professional learning committees from everything, from our, um, bus drivers, they have resources at Oakland Schools, cafeteria employees, um, so I wanted to add it, add that as well.
Okay.
Okay, is that, uh, everybody?
Yes. Sash, you want to come up and tell us about their product again? We'll edit it out when it gets to them.
We have an offline chat.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you, that's why that, uh, our security system, our, our cybersecurity system was the reason people couldn't access last night's report because we do have a pretty robust cybersecurity. So thank you, I didn't, that you're here, I didn't want to let that opportunity go by for thanking you, have a great cybersecurity. Okay, um, any further questions? Discussion? Nope? All right. James, good?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I
Okay, I just want to make sure. Um, okay, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
That was me too.
Nay nay? Okay.
Nay nay.
Uh, so you want to record, you have that?
Amanda, yeah.
And Mike? Okay, thank you. I'm just jotting it down, sorry. Item B, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Board of Education Meeting Schedule Review. Uh, that is coming up, it's that time of year, isn't it? For those of you that aren't familiar, our board calendar is not, uh, a yearly calendar, it is a, we run on the, um, our, same as our school year and our fiscal year is July first through June thirtieth. So this meeting, as you saw it, meeting schedule, as we came on board last year in July, or this time last year, we voted on a new, um, schedule and that schedule's almost up. So there is a draft in front of you, we are not voting on this tonight, correct? What I would propose is that everybody take a look at this and look at your personal calendars and if there's something out there that is going to create a problem for us, uh, moving forward where we're going to have more than, uh, three or four board members not be there, causing us not to have a quorum to have a meeting, we would need to know that. So if there's any that you currently have on your calendar that you won't be able to attend, uh, in this list, please let Angela know. And of course, there's always going to come up, here you go, you got it, Mike? No, right there on your left, or on your right, I'm sorry. Um, if there's anything on here, obviously, let Angela know. And of course, things are going to come up, that you're not going to be able to attend, whether it be a work schedule or you're not feeling well or child sick, those are completely understandable. Um, but again, remember, let her know if that's going to happen because if we don't have four of us here, we cannot have a meeting. that's going to happen because if we don't have four of us here, we cannot have a meeting. And if we have something that we're, we have to have a super majority to go into a closed session. So that means we need five. Okay? Anything else on the schedule? And I keep moving my papers and I move the agenda. Yep. Um, thank you. Safety in School Operations, Dr. Williman.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about some operational technology upgrades that we'll be using grant funding for. Um, the quotes have been provided to you previously, but I want to talk to you a little bit about each of them. Um, the first is a fiber upgrade proposal, which is the district buildings except for drainer property has OM1 multimode fiber installed internally. This cable connects all the IDF's with the MDF. These are tech closets that are spaced out in the buildings that have cabling ran from them to previous classroom, various classrooms for hardwired computers, printers, projectors, promethiums, wireless access points, cameras, HVAC, et cetera. Um, OM1 was introduced in 1989. It can transmit 10 gigabytes a second of data at a maximum of 33 meters, which is 108 feet. The high school and middle school have closets that are outside of that range. The greater the distance, the less data that can be moved to and from clients. The elementary schools are in better shape as it relates to the length of the, the fiber runs due to smaller size of the buildings, but we are stretching the limits of the fiber. All buildings are experiencing CRC errors between the IDF and MDF, some more than others. CRC errors is a detection mechanism that identifies if data has been changed or corrupted during transmission. Corrupted data can't be trusted and is discarded, so the network will try repeatedly to deliver the complete data. This slows down transmission and congests the network, thus causing issues. Our current environment is OM1 cabling in the wall that terminates into a patch panel that is connected to an OM3 patch cable and to a 10 gigabyte LRM transceiver. This is not an ideal configuration. The goal is to update the building to OM4 cable, which is introduced in 2009, and leaving the OM3 patch cables, which is fine due to backwards compatibility and the 10 gigabyte LM, LRM modules. OM4 will give us the ability to transfer 10 gigabytes a second up to 550 meters, which is 1,800 feet, and even 100 gigabytes a second up to 150 meters, which is 492 feet. This upgrade will drastically improve the flow of data in our network as well as the reliability of the security opponent, the components that we have placed in our buildings. The next is the distributed antenna system proposal. Currently, all of our buildings have below acceptable or zero coverage of cellular networks, and I think this building is the best example of that. Um, there's a, the seat that I'm in this evening, I've been able to somehow get them, but if I stand up, stuff will come through. Last board meeting, I had to step in a certain spot and lean to get cell service and that's not good for, when you think about safety and security. Um, so an analysis of all buildings was completed and it shows that we need to amplify our coverage. This proposal will deploy strategically-placed antennas throughout the buildings to provide all areas a reliable cell coverage for AT&amp;T, Verizon and T-Mobile networks. This proposal will also address our private radio solution. We are currently limited by the line of sight, so communication with Leonard is non-existent over our radios. We have addressed this problem with the high school and middle school by implementing an IP site connect solution. Communication takes place via RF repeaters at both buildings, but traverse our private fiber connections. A cellular wave station will be installed as well as all buildings that is mated to cellular device for redundancy. This will allow communication between all of our buildings. And additionally, Jim and I will be getting an upgrade in our radio so that we can better communicate between the districts should any emergency arise that we would need to communicate with all campuses. Um, and then this will also address the first responder ban. There was limit, limited to no service in all of our buildings. This proposal will install antennas that address and provide reliable coverage in all buildings. And then the last one is a Wi-Fi 6E upgrade proposal. We currently have Meraki MR52 access points throughout the district. The MR52 is a 802.11 AC wave 2 access point and operates on a 2.4 gigahertz and 5 gigahertz frequencies. There's one access point per classroom. Currently, we do not experience, we do experience connectivity issues when we have a large amount of clients attempting to connect to a single access point. This occurs during large activities that require the use of technology such as your M-step. Um, next year, ACT and SAT tests will transition from paper, paper and pencil to digital. Um, we believe that we will have issues during those tests if we do not have the internal fiber and wireless that, that we need to, to access that material. The same issues will affect our other devices that rely on wireless for operations such as potential panic buttons, security cameras, laptops, tablets, bad scanner, badge scanners, et cetera. The 6E proposal will introduce AX access points and 6 gigahertz band. We will also increase our throughput from 1 gigabyte per second to 2.5 gigabytes per second with the addition of the M-Gig switches. The new access point also come with uplink MU dash M-MIMO, which means that access point transmitting concurrently to multiple receivers can now also be simultaneously received from multiple transmitters. Our current access points do not have that technology. And I would like to thank Sash for all of that for me. So if there are questions, I'm going to bring him up. But I will say cellular coverage, radio coverage is very difficult. Um, and we saw that even with our power outage that we had, um, where DA and OES, um, experienced that, that even Jeff trying to communicate with me on our radio when I'm not, I was at my office at the time, it was very difficult and he had cell service issues. So trying to communicate with campuses in that situation, it does cause a problem. Um, Sash, along with, um, Jim Verneer, they've gone through, um, with our security teams, with the principals to be able to evaluate this and I believe Eagle, but who, Eagle and we've been in talks with Motorola as well as far as analyzing this. Um, so if you want to come up because they probably have questions.
Oh, no, I was going to make the motion first so we can have a second to discuss.
Yes. Why don't you go ahead and do that?
Okay.
And then we'll answer. I think Amanda has a question.
Alright. So. I'm moved to approve to proceed with the contract agreements for technology purchases, including fiber wireless DAS radio upgrades. Contracts will be presented for final approval.
Is there support? Support, Mike? Discussion?
So essentially, um, great job, Allison. I didn't understand half of the letters.
And that's him making it nice for us.
Essentially, this is enhancing our radio coverage so that our SROs are going to be on this as well, correct? Everyone will be able to reach wherever they're at in the district, each other easily, and there will not be any interruptions like we've had before.
Correct. It'll, it'll address all those issues.
Okay. That's really what I, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah. So just maybe to simplify a little bit more. So not only radio coverage, cell phone coverage, which is a different, so almost like a three-tiered approach, and then the overall back end networking between the buildings and, and, and stuff. Um, and I'll look for your book of all your acronym. I was joking. I got all that stuff. I, I have to commend Allison for saying it with a straight face and not, you know, I understood, but, and, you know, it was good.
What are you trying to say? This face looks like it didn't understand?
You know, what was it, what was that OTech before?
I do have a question. So when we get to this level of connectivity, if you will, what's the, um, as you know, when you, the minute you buy a laptop, three days later it's obsolete. What's our timeframe on this if we, if we go down this road? How much lifetime, of a lifetime do we expect?
I really think the internal fiber will outlast the buildings, to be honest with you. Um, I don't see us ever needing more than 100 gigs of data, but who knows? That could change, right? Um, but not anytime soon. Uh, the wireless, you know, the wireless, I'd say five to 10 years. I'd like to reevaluate in five years. It could last us up to 10. It's really cutting edge. It's the latest, uh, wireless technology out there right now. Um, what else am I missing? What's that? Uh, yeah, I mean, the cell coverage, hey, once we have the radio system in place, I mean, it's not, it's not something that's ever going to degrade, right? It's just, they're just going to be peppering more towers up there. So, um, yeah, I don't, you know, we're installing the new switches right now from last year's purchase. I see those lasting us another 10 years. Um, I mean, we've got, we're going to have a very robust network, a very, very nice network.
Okay. So maybe in three years, we should start to think about that in our five-year plan. Moving forward.
Yeah, one of the, I was going to say, one of, one of the things that the finance committee talked with us about yesterday is that you, you will have coming before you a five-year budget projection. In that five-year budget projection are five years' worth of cost for technology, five years' worth of cost for facilities, five years' worth of cost for safety and security. That will be in the budget you, you have presented to you to approve in June. As soon as you approve that budget, technology, safety, security and facilities will take those numbers out and they'll create for you a five-year facilities plan, a five-year tech plan and a five-year security, safety plan. It's all going to be tied within the budget. So you will eventually have, by the end of the summer, a five-year for everything. And the, the, where we're leveraging this now, and I'm so glad you were able to talk about its longevity, is you have been granted certain state funds around safety and security that you, you need to spend over the next two years and you need to spend it for this purpose. And if you don't, you'll need to give it back. And so what we're saying is, what is it we really need for safety and security? That's the first filter. The second filter is, is what is it we can put in place that will have longevity for the district, that will save you money over time so that you can preserve your own funding? And that's the second lens. And this is, uh, what has come to you now. Over the course of the next month, there'll be other projects coming to you with the same source of funding, with the same source of immediacy that we need to address in order to meet the grant requirements.
And, um, I just want to mention that all three of these projects are guaranteed to be completed by September 30th.
Which was critical.
Yes. So go, Mary, go ahead.
I was just going to, um, make sure that I understand the motion correctly. So that we're, we're, um, the motion is to proceed with agreement. So to, to have, um, our authority to continue to move forward to put this together.
What we'd like, and I know it's a little unusual, but because we are moving rather quickly and we want to get the contracting in place, what I'd like to do is know that I have your endorsement on the projects, even though I don't have your final approval on the contracts. So we can use your endorsement to move ahead, get the contracts in place. If we bring them back in two weeks and you don't like them, you can still not approve them. But you're kind of giving us and giving the vendors the knowledge that you're going to seriously consider approving that if we can bring you back a contract that's, that's appropriate.
Yeah, no, I had a question. Um, on, on the radio stuff for the public safety side, is this taking into account the changeover of the current radio systems that they're going to? Okay.
It is.
Because, because I know that's coming out in June and unless it gets pushed back again, but I just was curious. Wanted to make sure that we're forward thinking on that.
Right.
Okay, cool.
And that September 30th date is important because that's when we have to have spent our funds.
For one of the grants.
For one, for, for the one grant. Okay.
I think too, when you mentioned the five-year budget, it's good to know that just because we're projecting five years doesn't mean we're not going to go revisit this in one year to make sure some earth-shattering innovation didn't come out. And then we need to project for that at some time in the next few years. The whole purpose of doing a forward forecast is to capture things as quick as we can so they don't become capital outlay projects that are so big that we have to go to a bond issue for them.
Right. And that's important that we think about that on all of our, all, all of the things that we've put in place is that we revisit them to see if they're still make sense for us and they're operating as billed, I guess is the way to put that. Okay. Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So we've reached item nine, unscheduled, unscheduled public comment. So we're going to need those cards in. Oh, we'll have one filled out. It's just to delay because our attorney's not here.
He's not. Well, he's supposed to be waiting for us in the background.
Let him know he has to normally fill it out prior to.
Yeah.
We're not waiting for people to fill out cards.
Yeah. Typically, we wait, but you know you're going to get called, so why don't you just come right on up, right? You were so enthralled in the conversation.
I was.
You forgot.
Um, I'll be brief. I've just got a couple of things. Uh, first of all, uh, I'd like to say to Dr. Markovich that I think your solution to how to honor these students was excellent. I, I think it was, I, I'm aware of the issues that were involved and it was a tough one. And I think you came up with probably the best solution anybody could have. So I.
I had a good team to work with.
Well, they, they did a good job. Okay, in my opinion anyhow. Uh, secondly, I wanted to bring up a concern that I have, uh, and this goes back to the, the clinic, uh, that we were going around about and they were going to have the, uh, town hall meeting. And of course, we never had it, but I had heard that the way it was going to be run was we were going to have to submit our questions in writing on paper and then they were going to pick which ones they were going to answer. And that's not my idea of a town hall. Um, maybe I messed up, but a town hall to me is an opportunity to have a discussion. So I think that it should be done that people raise their hand, whoever's running it calls on people, and then you ask your question and you have a chance for a little bit of back and forth. Now, obviously you got to limit it with that many people. I understand that. And the other thing is it, it should be done with respect. Nobody should be calling anybody names or anything like that. But there were a lot of other people that I talked to that were planning on being there and when they heard that, they did not like that at all. So I just hope that you'll reconsider that policy for, for the future. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. None other? Okay, we have our list of scheduled activities and my, they are all on our website. Um, administrative clarification, Dr. Markovich? Final board comments? Anybody? Okay.
Quick, um, why GuidePost isn't here this evening? I thought they had agreed to come and report to us this evening.
Um, when, well, I, I didn't understand that they were coming and reporting at this board meeting. I understood that we needed to arrange for them to come and have informational, uh, meetings with our community. I, I thought that was the direction that we were supposed to go, uh, that they would release the port, report. We would have time to review it and study it. We would have time to give our community an opportunity to comment on it. And then if we needed them to come back to clarify or to answer questions or to expand to the board, that they would come back at that time, not come back the day after it was released. So maybe I misunderstood, but that was the understanding I worked out with them. And I think I put that in a board memo maybe last week in an update, I hope.
I know I have a text that had said they would be here on May 9th and so that's kind of where I'm going from.
Well, we have, um, we have the, um, law firm that represents us in our work with GuidePost who is coming to talk to you tonight about an issue related to the next report, which, which you're going to go into closed session to hear. And maybe I wasn't clear in how I communicated that to you.
Okay.
I'm sorry if that's, I'm sorry if I messed that up.
I just wanted to kind of also give, uh, you know, the community an understanding too of when they will be here. If we're, we're seeing news reports that June is the next date, but has GuidePost confirmed?
I would not go with any news reports. I would not go with any news reports until we hear, we, we have to digest the report.
So I'm, I'm sorry. I was, I was speaking to you about the report one, the one that just got released. If you have additional questions about the release date of report two, you would, we would have to call them in because I have not yet asked them to come and appear before you to do anything around the release date for report two.
Okay. Well, they, are they planning to be at the next board meeting then so that we can ask them when the second report is due?
I think that's, if you want them to be, I'm sure they will be, but I think. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
If you want them to be, I think they, they would be and we'd see if they'd be available. If you want them to be, I think they would be, and we'd see if they'd be available, but that's something you, the board, would have to decide. The last time they came to you, they spoke to the fact that they were waiting for some information to be released that they could share with you that came out of the prosecutor's office. They explained that they weren't sure exactly when the prosecutor would feel comfortable doing that, and therefore the decision had to be made. Do you want a report before that information can be included? Or do you want a report with that information included? I don't know that you've had a formal board conversation about that, and maybe we need to schedule a formal board conversation about that, or you can talk about it tonight. But I think, I was not getting any clear direction on which way you wanted it to go. The only thing that I heard informally from some people, not on the board but in the community, was that, you know, if there was information pending in the prosecutor's office, and if we could include that in a report, it would probably give us a more thorough report. So, and I don't think GuidePost controls when the prosecutor might feel comfortable doing that. But the board's free to discuss, and anything you direct, I'll carry through.
I do believe that we need to have them come at a more frequent rate. I don't think they need to be at every meeting. But as all of us have felt, the extraordinary, those of us especially that weren't here on November 30th, I think feel an extraordinary push for it, when, and we appreciate and understand, but I do think there has to be a level of accountability to GuidePost to come and at least report out to the community. Sending an email to, no offense, Dr. Markovich, it's you, but we're the ones that are sitting here every two weeks, answering to our constituents, to our families, to our kids' families, our kids' friends' families, what's happening. We're the ones that, you know, get a lot of questions, and we want to make sure that we have at least verbatim what they're saying to them they say to us. So I guess I would support Amanda in that sense, that I don't think they need to come every meeting, but they certainly need to provide more frequent updates to this community until it's done, especially as we're encroaching on trials, we're encroaching on other things. This is, in my opinion, it's a really big last piece of this that will help us finally get over that hurdle, so we can not start, but get through the, in the middle zone. I guess you want to call this the very uncomfortable zone that we've been living both from staff, students, families, communities. I guess it would just be more my plea that they be more transparent and come talk to the community and to the board, at least if it's a five-minute update. I know it's expensive to fly them, but my gosh, they have, I'm done. Okay, that was my plea.
Agreed. We had heard, we had heard four weeks ago that it would be no later than two to three weeks for that first report. And of course, as we know, it took four. I just really, I really think that they should be here with this community and being a little more open, and even perhaps giving presentations. We have, our school gives presentations. Everyone is not going to be able to make this meeting on Thursday. We need some more involvement, I think, so, that's all.
Anybody else?
No, I agree. I think their presence would open up a lot of communication and make people feel maybe more comfortable. Maybe some of the people that they're still waiting to hear from might feel a little bit more open if they, if they felt like that piece of communication was there.
Okay.
So, and they don't have, always have to fly here. They do have Michigan people.
Right, but I did, I did, I did broach that subject with them.
They do have some Michigan, I don't know exactly where they live, or if they have an office that they're based out of, or whatever, but they certainly can get here. I mean, crying out loud.
I did discuss that idea.
It shouldn't cost us thousands of dollars.
And so, you know, I'll ask, I'll make sure that-
They can send a Michigan representative when you do the report.
If I do believe that when Brad was here one time, he said that, you know, we'll get to any meeting that you guys need us to. And I think he even, I don't know if he was tongue-in-cheeking it or not, but he said, "I won't even charge you," so.
I doubt that.
Well, that's what I said.
I've seen bills.
Yeah, I know. So, but-
They charge us for everything.
I know. I'm not here to argue with you about it, I'm just trying to tell you that that's the comment that he made. So, yep. Anybody else?
My understanding was that there was maybe a couple people they wanted to talk to, but that a big piece of this that's holding this up is getting a release from the prosecutor's office. Now, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think we want to have them come here and present to us and say, "We're still waiting to get an answer from the prosecutor's office." Like, I'm not, I'm not sure, just 'cause that's my understanding of where, what we're waiting on.
I think it'll be better perceived coming from them than us saying that-
But they just, he just said it when he was here. That was right. I mean, I have to look back, but-
I agree. But if you look at news stories and what's going out there, that's not the common consensus. That's not common knowledge, even though he's here and said it, and it was there, and people watched it. But having them come here and having, being put, I don't want to say put in the hot seat, but being held accountable for the expectations that they sent with us on reporting and the next steps, and where it goes with the progress and stuff, and then, you know, so they can hear from the community and stuff, us always taking the heat for everything, and the disappointment and the delays, and us standing here or sitting here not having answers. Because it is supposed to be independent, so we don't want to intervene. We don't want to dictate. So they need to come here, present, and be able to hear. Maybe they'll have side conversations with people on the side after they get on talking, and get a better sense, and maybe they can share information with them. But, you know, for us being independent and out of it, and not controlling or having any say in it, I think it's important to have them here, especially when they recommitted to coming out and speaking, or being here. And I'm appreciative of the town hall coming this week, you know, the three separate sessions, so hopefully people are able to come out and speak to them then. But, you know, there's gonna be people that can't make that at all, and still have questions and stuff, so.
I think the court system is a very fluid system as well, and we may not be the first ones to know when there's something that changes within the court environment. So no one in this community, I think, has any vested interest in releasing a report that could potentially be detrimental to the prosecution's case. But I think it's okay that we hear that that's the reason why they're waiting, and even if it's repetitive a lot.
So even if it's repetitive at every meeting, just still bring them here and say, "We're still waiting?" I just want to be sure, because I'm gonna have to, we're gonna have to make that phone call, and say, "We want you here at every meeting, regardless of the cost."
I don't want them at every meeting. I think a month is a reasonable-
So a monthly, you want, like a monthly update?
I think that's reasonable. You can't, you know, six, eight, 10 weeks go by. Shoot, I've been here since October, and I've seen them twice. That would-
Well, that's about the same amount of time as we saw them since the beginning.
Uh huh, yeah.
Maybe, maybe three times.
And if they have Michigan people and they're not charging us, well, great.
So you would like a monthly update?
Yeah, I think as appropriate.
Would you, besides adding a body here, if it's a, they can't get their Michigan people or other people, a formal update from them directed to the board and to the community, or a person?
If it's a memo in the packet that the public can read.
Okay.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
If they can't physically be here, we'll have a memo?
I think-
Which we can introduce into the public meeting into the minutes, because it's in our packet.
I think the biggest thing is that we need an update from them, by them, without our fingerprints or anything on it. And it comes from them that the community's hearing. And it's, it's updates, and if it's, we're still waiting on the prosecutor's update, yeah.
So I want to make sure that I understand. Without our fingerprints, meaning if they give us a monthly update and a memo, are we reading it? Is that what you mean by our fingerprints being on it? You would rather them be here to present it?
I would rather be a memo or an email or something from them directed to Oxford Community School Board and community, or Oxford, the school board and the community from them on their letterhead to us, that we can put in our packet, that it's there to be read from the public. And it's not something that they send us in an email, and then we're turning around and rereading or putting any, you know, and we're not interpreting what they're saying. It's not a phone conversation, it's not a text message, it's from them, and it's, you know, it's, you know-
I would state, though, that that's not gonna be the expectation every month. I think that they still need to come in person. If, so say, you know, for instance, we know for a fact that there, nothing's gonna happen in one of the cases until July-ish, right? So if they give us a written update in June, fine. But July, maybe potentially come and give us a different definition. I don't think it needs to go three, four months before they come up here again to give a long-winded speech, and then it feels like we're left holding this information without any kind of product or ability to speak about it, because it was just an update, and then it gets put on their website and walks away. I think it needs to be more, they need to be in person, at least every other month, at the very minimum, if it is truly the reason why they're waiting is litigation.
I agree with that. I would like to be able to ask questions, and I would like to have them here to answer those questions, rather than any email or something like that. And additionally, how far down the road are we gonna go with the prosecutor? They've been asking for information from the prosecutor for months, the cases have been delayed. I mean, what is the expectation from GuidePost as far as, are we just waiting until the litigation has gone all the way through and delayed, and delayed, and delayed again, and so the report gets delayed? Or at what point does the prosecutor and GuidePost work together and say, you know, "This is the information that we'll give you, and so that you can get this report to your community right away"? Because I can't see this being three, four, five, six months down the road and being okay. I know that's kind of a rhetorical question.
We may have to come to a decision at some point, then. Then we may have to come to a decision, like was talked about earlier, whether, I don't know if that's our decision or theirs, but if we're gonna move forward without that information. I mean, you can't, we can't, nobody's gonna force the prosecutor's office to do anything. There's not, we don't negotiate, you know, GuidePost wouldn't negotiate with them, you know. They're there to do their job. But if, you know, if somewhere down the road, we had to revisit when that, and again, I don't know that that's our decision or GuidePost, it kind of sounded like, I'm not sure what that decision was, Vicki, but, you know, you were talking about. I mean, do we want to have the information they do have released?
This is a third-party investigation, so it is truly GuidePost.
Right.
But there is also the concept of an anxious community and an anxious school board to get the report. I can, I can picture GuidePost saying to you, you know, "We can give you this report now, and it will be, not have this in it. We could give you this report, we think, here, and it will have this in it." I don't know if you'll get to make the decision, I really don't, because it's a third-party report. And they may decide, you know, even though you want it early, we're not gonna write it if we don't have this information in it. Or they could decide, okay, you've been honest so much, that we'll write the report without this information in it. But I think in the end, it's their decision. However, I understand the need to make your questions and your concerns and the community's concerns known to them. And I understand the need to feel that they are responsive to that. Not that they'll change their report because of you, because that would be inappropriate, it's a third-party report. But that they would take those things into consideration as they're deciding what to do with the report. That's how I think it will go, but I admit I've never been involved in this kind of situation before.
Which is why we would like them here to ask.
It's new for me.
Okay.
Well, why don't we schedule them to come here?
Next meeting.
At the next meeting. And why don't we discuss what an appropriate timeline is for them to repeat their visits, or give us updates, or whatever, and the public can hear it and be a part of it, or whatever.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Any other further final board comments? Okay, there is a motion to go into closed session.
You want me to read it?
Please.
Move to meet in closed session pursuant to the open meetings ex. section 8H to consider material exempt from disclosure, specifically material provided by attorney-client privilege, written legal opinion.
Is there support? Support James? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Whitney?
Yes.
Trustee Summers?
Yes.
Trustee McDonough?
Yes.
Treasurer Hanser?
Yes.
Secretary Reese?
Vice President Schaefer?
Yes.
President DeAlessandro?
Yes.
Seven fifty-five.
Okay, seven fifty-five. We are out of closed session at 10:30. Meeting is adjourned.